Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, January 28th, 2025. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, minutes for reports received and filed?
We don't have any this week.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Okay, today we have business to conduct with the USS Missouri Virginia-class submarine crew that's here in town, right?
Yes.
Okay, and the state of the state is at 3:00 PM this afternoon?
Yes.
I have a meeting with folks regarding Heartland Port tomorrow evening. And that's it this week. Let's see, just note, next Tuesday we'll probably be meeting in the sheriff's training room?
Yes.
And I have visited with Brian, is he here?
Yeah.
He's hiding, okay. We won't, we probably won't stream it or capture video perhaps, but we will capture audio. So someday, years from now, when somebody wants to look back and see what we said on next Tuesday, I think we'll be able to find it.
Okay.
Because our minutes are sort of brief. Okay. Is that right?
Yes. Yep, got the crew of the USS Missouri here, so that's what I'm doing today and tomorrow. So then I get the surface for air and get back to normal. Any commission comments? Okay, west, Eastern Commissioner, is Jeff on? He had asked if we could move the salary discussion up because he has to be somewhere...
Tanning appointment?
Pardon?
Does he got a tanning appointment?
I don't ask. We don't ask. We don't, we don't, we don't ask. He is just out of the country to see if he can get back in, but yeah, I don't want to know. So is Jeff on?
He is not on yet.
Oh.
Oh, well then we'll...
I'm on there.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're going to go with salary discussions for auditor, collector, clerk, public administrator, recorder, treasurer, maintenance, and commission.
I told Eric Peters and Judy Ridgway that that would be last and it'd be a lot. They're not here, they want to be here.
Oh, well, Jeff, what time do you have to...
Call them?
Call them, yeah.
Call them, come on.
9:45, I've got a 10 o'clock appointment set up, and so if I can get out of there by 9:45, I'll still be fine. If you all want to do some of the housekeeping stuff and...
Okay, we'll do that.
If they get up here.
Okay, okay, and we will go back to bids and contracts. Subawards agreements to sign fiscal year 24, Cole County. The initial of two.
So these subaward grants are from what we call the regional homeland security grants that we put in for every year that helps support the hazmat team, the mobile emergency operations center vehicle, and different upgrades. So I think they did very well with Nick and two of the members of the hazmat team that worked on these grants last year. So in total, there's a list a little bit over $300,000 for the 13 counties. And we did, with these grants, Cole County received $229,000 of that. The first grant is $1,040, which is our generator load testing. The second one is $77,000 for the hazmat team equipment upgrades. The third one is $108,903 for the mobile EOC sustainment. There's one in there for $40,542. And that's for portable radio cash. And then we have the $1,624 for Elliott. Elliott is a software company, or it's a program, badging software. A lot of the badges that you see, EMS and all of the required ability, that prints those and you can keep a track. And during an emergency, you can track everybody's time and where they're located, so that's, we've had that for many years, but just the upgrades for that is an annual cost. So that's all the grants.
That's all?
Mm-hmm, five of them. So we just need to sign the first pages on each one of them.
I don't know why you didn't get all 300,000.
They tried, I think, but you know, there's other 13...
You did pretty well, 229,000 and the rest.
They did their job, they did their job.
Great work, great work, Joe.
Harder every year on these grants.
I'll make a motion that the commission approve and sign the sub award agreement for the five grants explained by Mr. Farr. The first one for the generator at 1,040. The second for the decontamination supplies, et cetera, for 77,067.76. The third one for a telex system, the amount is 108,903.68. Fourth one is portable radios, total amount is 40,542. And fifth and final is for sustainment of the existing Elliott ID card system in the amount of $1,624.
I will second. Any discussion, Jeff? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get to sign an initial each page?
Yes.
Gosh, Bill.
12 pages on each grant. Yes. I might also add the generator load testing, this will be the last year we'll be able to receive that. They voted to take that out to release money for other counties, so it's gonna be up to each county now to take care of that each year. And I think we put that in the budget last year, if I recall. It's not a big amount, but those large generators, if they're not tested annual, they run about four hours, they do a load test on them to make sure everything's working properly. So this will be the last year of that.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, contract signing of 2024-22 cleaning services for EMS.
Last week, we awarded the 2024-22 to after hour building maintenance for the cleaning at the new EMS building. The contract was for $11,790, and today I'm just needing signing of the contract.
I make a motion... A motion to sign the contract with cleaning services for the EMS building, after hours cleaning project.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, bid award and signing of contract for the Wildwood Drive extension.
So we had met last week, talked about this a little bit, but the bids were open on Friday, January 17th, and Don Schneiders excavating Redlow. There were a total of four bids. This project involves grading paving of the Wildwood Drive from Edgewood Drive south to Rock Ridge Road with a roundabout at the intersection of Wildwood and Rock Ridge. There were two alternative bids with this project, and Public Works recommends awarding the base bid to include the waterline installation work to be reimbursed by Public Water Supply District Number Two.
And we had a conversation last week about the bids coming in higher than the estimate, but we felt that because they grouped so close together, it wasn't, they are all good bids, and it was a good set of plans. It's just the nature of what we're facing right now. In this type of work, prices are continuing, are continuing to escalate. So not only are we over the engineer's estimate, but we're also over what we had budgeted. We were hoping the project would come in a little bit lower than it did. However, we have identified some areas where we can make some adjustments in our budget to cover the additional three areas. North Rock Creek gravel road upgrade, we had started the engineering in-house, and with the loss of engineering tech earlier in the year, there was a little concern that maybe we may need to hire that out to finish it, but we decided we can just do that in-house. We'll keep doing that in-house, so there's $100,000 right there. The Hemp Street Road Bridge demolition, this has kind of been on the, on the table to, to handle the past few years, but we've ran into some potential regulatory delays with the US Army Corps of Engineers. May take a little time to get it ready to bid, so we don't see an issue with pushing that to bid in January of next year. So it's not gonna cause us any issues, so there's 125,000 there. And then $500,000 was set aside for the High Street Biodeuct Cooperative Project with the city. We're contributing half of the engineering cost, which was just under a million dollars. The city did use ARPA funds to pay for most of that upfront, or to cover that cost upfront. I did talk to David Bangy Friday, we had a conversation with him, and he felt that there would not be the need for the city to request those funds in this calendar year, and he was okay with us pushing that to next, next year. So that alleviates or frees up $725,000 to cover the additional that was needed in the budget of 716,000. So we're comfortable with that, and we can look at other ways to supplement those, those projects, or move those around in the next year. So we're good with moving forward with that change in the budget.
Okay, so we've covered the budget, and then the, the difference between the engineer's estimate and the actual was only more like 60, wasn't it? Was...
The engineer's estimate was $5,850,946.26, and the total bid was $6,47,872.3.
So about that, there's some of that, the waterline reimburses us.
Okay.
And then there's also city sewer work that's part of their agreement with the development, and that's will be paid by the city. That's not part of the cooperative project, so that money comes off of the top too.
Okay, I, my memory was it was somewhere around 60.
That was the waterline work, and the city sewer work was like 270.
Okay.
So the overage of the engineer's estimate and then overage of the budget, they're really two different numbers in comparison, and we're right now most concerned about the budget, which we have covered here.
Got it.
I want to keep moving forward.
I'll make a motion that the commission sign the contract award the bid to Don Schneiders' construction for the Wildwood project.
I will second. Any discussion, Jeff?
Good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, we'll do the, real quick, the contract signing with Overhead Door Company, and then we'll go to salary discussion.
This is just a maintenance contract for the garage doors over at the sheriff's apartment with Overhead Door Company. The contract amount is $2,000, and I'm just needing signing of the contract, and Wheeler and Greg are both good with it.
I'll make a motion to sign the maintenance contract with Overhead Door Company for the sheriff's overhead doors.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we have the recorder and we have the treasurer here, so I think we will go to the salary discussion for auditor, collector, clerk, public administrator, recorder, treasurer, maintenance, and commission. So...
Did you miss the, did you, who did you mention here?
Judy and Eric, treasurer. These guys, they were here.
Oh, they were already here?
We were waiting.
Yeah, they were late.
Okay.
Yeah, Larry, Larry's, Larry's.
He's heading this up, Larry.
Absolutely, come on, bring your nice cup up here.
But you were furthest along in this, so... Were you ready to, you were the furthest along to state the case, right? I thought you were planning to be on the agenda.
I don't know, did I go first or last in this?
You could go first.
No, no, you're fine. My request has changed a little bit, and I just sent you all the notice this morning. I don't think Sam probably saw it, I'm sure he may have, but I made Sheila aware. My total request now is $8,000, and that would be $4,000 for my chief deputy, and $2,000 for my collector supervisor, and $2,000 for my deputy collector. When I talk about my chief deputy, the, in comparing to other counties, even I use Cape, Jasper, and Boone County, the high is Boone at $68,473. The low is Jasper at $61,085. My chief deputy is currently at around 56. I think when you talk about collector's office duties, it, it doesn't really change based on the size of your county. We have the same requirements in Cole County as they have in St. Louis County as far as what the collector's office has to do and what the employees have to do. In addition to that, Gretchen Surratt has the collector for almost six months in, in 2023, when I was out of the office for medical reasons. She's been with the county 13, almost 14 years, I believe, and I think she is well-deserving. I've tried to get raises in the past, and, and that has not happened. I don't know the last time, I don't know if Sheila has any records of, when the last time the county actually gave raises, not, not colas, but actual raises.
There was that extra 1% pool money last year, but that was just a small amount, over and above the COLA, that each department was able to divvy up between their...
That was like $1,300.
Yeah, right, I know, it's not a lot, I know, it's not a lot, but yeah. Since I've been the auditor and doing the budget, that's the only...
I mean, the collector's office handles $100 million that we collect a year. All my employees are bonded. For half of what I'm bonded for, I'm at $750,000, so they're at $375,000. And our job duties are quite diverse, and all of them are pretty well versed in taking care of whatever the other one also handles, so we're well, well cross-trained. My collector's office has less employees than most collector's offices, the same size or even smaller. So I think we're very efficient and cost-effective, and I believe the, the salaries are not excessive by any means or well-deserved, and I'm hoping that Sheila will back that up with whatever information she has gathered. I filled out all the requested information she has requested, and hope that you'll look on this favorably.
You, you've, you found some numbers for Jasper, right?
Yes.
Okay. And that's probably a comparable, they're first, first-class county?
They're a little bigger than we are, but they are, I mean, I think they're comparable. The size of their staff is, is considerably larger than ours, just as Cape Girardeau's is considerably larger than ours.
Did you look at Newton while you were down in that part of the state?
No, I didn't. I, I knew Steve McIntosh at Jasper County, and that's why I emailed him, so...
You trust him? He's a former CPA, you know?
A farmer's CPA? No more than I trust you or Mark.
I, I see him at all the MAC meetings, and we talk about the good old days, so he seems pretty, pretty sharp. Just kidding. Jasper is Joplin, right?
Yes, sir.
And Carthage.
Carthage, yeah.
Carthage is exactly where the county seats.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, they've got a beautiful court house.
Newton would be next door, okay. Sheila, had you tried to do Jasper or Newton?
I did not try Jasper, I accepted the information Larry had, it was not on my radar. I did reach out to six other counties that I got no responses from on these specific questions. I reached out to Camden, Green, Miller, Molotov, Morgan, and Pettis. And so, I mean, I made several asks. It's getting to be a little more difficult to get information from them, because Boone posts theirs on the website, so we have their grid. And the others, I just have to catch them at the right time to get information from them. The one thing I'd like to say is, I, I don't begrudge anyone asking, and I do my best to help, but I want everybody to realize that the money that is not granted to your departments does not go to my paycheck. I don't have a dog in this race, I don't do anything to try to prevent anyone from getting a raise. I do what I can to try to support that ask. There are a few requirements that I have been asked to get, which is job descriptions and performance reviews. I've gotten them in most cases, some we definitely need to work on, some we need to work on a little, some are really great and have worked with me a lot. So I just want everybody to know that, that if I don't support a ask entirely, it's nothing personal, and it's not in any way benefiting me to, to help deny money, so, yes, sir.
So assuming you got all of the information that you had asked for from all the different counties, how do you treat that information?
We, I present it to the commissioners, and they see what the comparisons are, and, and it's just an issue, it's, I mean...
But if you had all that data, would you make any particular recommendation for any of his employees?
Only if there was anything that was totally an outlier. The rest of it is at commission discretion. They ask me to gather information, and that's what I do.
Fair enough, thanks.
Sheila, on any of them that, that would be good to get, and you can't seem to get the response, why don't you tell us, commissioners, who they are, because we see those other commissioners, and we might be able to work through the commissioner and say, hey, can you get your HR department crunch those numbers for us?
And I don't think it's that they're not wanting to cooperate, I think I'm catching them at a bad time, and it's like everybody else's to-do list, some days it's really long and stuff falls to the bottom, so I'm gonna follow up and, and try to get more information from them just to have it.
So Larry, I, I don't have Jasper County on, do you have there?
I'll forward that to you, Sam, I do have those numbers.
I think it'd speed things along if I know that each of us as elected officials could call the several counties that we all consider agree on our comparables and get that data more quickly. I'm more likely to get it from a treasurer and at the end of the same day I called, as probably the collector and the clerk and rest are. If we did that homework ourselves and then gave it to...
Sheila.
Sheila, that might speed things along.
Good point. I, I think it, to my way of thinking, the ones that would really carry the most weight would be first-class counties.
Right.
And we have the numbers for Boone. I think Cape would be a, a good one, Green County to some extent, Jasper and Newton. And Pettis, although they're second, they're still, got some size to them up there.
But not Camden?
Oh, I'm sorry, if I missed Camden, yes, Camden is a recent first-class.
I had numbers for Cape for our office, I'll give them to Sheila, so...
Okay.
Which are a little bit higher too, so, of course, Larry's, the raise he's talking about would put us right in line with what their salaries are.
So I guess my question is, are you gonna consider each, like, are you gonna make a final decision on Larry's today, or do you...
I think it would be...
As a group, would you wanna, should we all get back to within a week, hopefully, maybe, with additional, with information regarding ours, or what, what do you, what would you like from us, I guess is my question?
I would like more data.
Okay.
I think it'd be premature to, to make a decision on Larry's, because there is some interplay here. We, we, I don't think you'll see a favorite son or daughter, oh, you know, sorry. We could go on seniority, and I guess you would be...
Number one.
Number one, your, your office would, but I think...
It's like the average of the employees.
Mark, as I told you last week when you and I visited, I put every one of the elected officials that are here that are seeking some adjustments, I put them basically in the same silo. They've, they all face the same issues, and, but it's a little different silo than we put the sheriff, EMS, the nurses at health, and, and maybe a few folks out at public works because of the market forces that were making us move quicker in those areas, so...
Well, the same, the, the one thing in common is, all these employees, our employees and theirs, are looking to improve their life, and better wages is part of that. I can tell you, two of my employees work part-time jobs, outside of working for the collector from 8:00 to 4:30.
I, I don't dispute that. Where I was making a distinction is, I think the sheriff might have been the first one to come to us, he, he couldn't fill the positions, and the, and the other sheriffs of surrounding counties were poaching his people. I don't think you, you have the same surrounding county poaching your people like the sheriff did. That's my perception, prove me wrong, that, you know, that your people are leaving to go to work at an adjoining county. That's where I made a little bit of a distinction between the five officials I see sitting here versus what we've done for some other areas, other elected officials or other departments.
Right, now to, now to reflect, or piggyback on Larry's comments, I think all of us are in the same boat. No, no raises of, and COLA's been approved for any of our departments.
Right, another, another reason...
But other departments, you, I mean, like, you know, you mentioned the sheriff, Public Works, you looked at them. You actually look at the assessor's office last year, so even though he's still asking for more, and his, you know, he's got a lot of positions, I think, similar, you know, similar type work, you know, clerical-type positions that, that we all have, but, but you did consider him. I look at the prosecutor, a lot of their, number of their clerks, clerical positions got raises last year, so you've, you have, although he's asking for more too, but you have addressed some of his requests. Health Department, I'm not sure, other than nurses, it seemed like two years ago they got some adjustments for some of their clerical positions, so I think, I think you've looked at them. So yeah, that's about it. You mentioned the sheriff, courts, or...
Juvenile, you know, juvenile.
Yeah, juvenile got, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm putting them now with courts because Judge Beadham decided to treat juveniles just like all of the court employees, that he would dictate what they get paid and otherwise.
I would have to see other counties. Boone County's kind of, you know, they're a super county, so their salaries are always, you know, if we were commissioners there, I think they're making, what, 100 and...
Well over 100.
Well over 100, and, and so...
Yeah, that's not...
Comparing to Boone, I like, I like Carthage, I like Cape Girardeau, I think, is probably the closest in size, population, everything to us, so...
Camden's got kind of a different demographic, 'cause all the resorts and retired people, but inside, their assess valuation, I think, is about the same as ours, yeah, so, anyway.
The only dispute I'd have with Sam is, I, I went to school there for four years in Boone and lived there in five, and I wouldn't consider them a super county.
They have twice the budget that we...
Yeah, they, they...
Or more.
Another department I want to throw in, don't forget Emergency Management, we've got the one, you've got the one employee I think you ought to consider too, so...
I think the easiest way to get salaries is a sunshine request, and so if you tell me what counties you want, then I will just sunshine request a salary, unless that way they have three days to respond, they don't have all this back and forth going on. Just send it as a sunshine request and be done with it.
Well, if you're, if you're taking notes, my... Well, if you're, if you're taking notes, my request would be Cape, Camden, Green.
Green's pretty big. Green is huge.
It is, but, but it's a...
I mean, that'd be good for us.
Pettis, Pettis.
So I'm just, I'm gonna jump in here real quick, too, if I can. If you're talking about the counties, we're not, we're not competing against Cape and Green. They're not stealing our employees, so I don't even know why we're including those in there. I mean, if we're gonna include those, then include all the counties and take an average. I mean, we're competing against our neighboring counties, so include them as well. I mean, you get Osage, Miller, Marys, include those in there.
I don't think that's fair, simply because of the assessed value of those counties. There's a lot more, while the jobs are basically the same, there's a lot more work in a first-class county than there is in a second or third or fourth-class county.
They're still working eight hours. I mean, that's what you're getting out of it.
And Jeff, county auditor, I can't compare to any of those. They don't have county auditors, so I think we, I think we, our best comparables are other first-class and second-class counties.
Well, come on, you just gotta inflict the numbers for me. I would, too. That's right. I would be saying, let's, let's grab these biggest counties, the ones with the most, the highest salaries. And when we run them through HR, I say run it through HR. I'm not saying that I'm going to match anybody's. I'm just using that as comparison. And we're not, we made some adjustments at the sheriff's office that weren't truly needed, because we were losing people. Last week, I voted no against the Public Works, and there were several other reasons, but we're not losing people necessarily out there either, or if we do lose somebody, we're able to fill it pretty quick and easy. I don't think that our salaries are terrible at all. I'm not saying they're perfect. I'm sure as hell not saying that everybody's getting paid what they probably deserve, but it's, it's a government job. They're not going to be as well-paid. I think we've got great benefits, so, I mean, y'all can get whatever comparison you want. I just wanted to throw that out there on my side of it.
Can I ask a question about the poaching argument that I've heard before? And it's just a question. I don't come to the meetings regularly, so I don't know the answer to the question, but my understanding is, in the last two or three years, the post-budget requests coming from different departments, which we've all mentioned several times here, the argument was that you all need to do something beyond what you did at budget time, because my employees, usually a particular, a particular group are being poached. So that's a cogent argument. We all can, we all can agree that you want to save those employees instead of having them go elsewhere, for sure. But the question is, isn't it true that a lot more than just those poachable positions ended up getting an increase in pay? In other words, the back office or clerical or custodial positions, whatever you want to call them, a lot of those employees in different departments also got increases at the same time that you all justified the poachable positions needed to be buttressed. Their salaries needed to be increased.
I'd give a qualified yes, that's true, except, and I didn't like it, for instance, that jailers were the instigator in the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
And that resulted in some increase in salaries for deputy, road deputies, and I didn't see that as, as a one-to-one one-off. If those road deputies thought that jailers were being paid too much, they could have, they could have applied for a jailer job. And so, instead of having their arm out the window and seeing sunshine, they could have spent 12 hours a day having feces thrown at them in the jail, but they'd rather have it thrown at them in the sunshine, I guess. But I agree to some extent, but I don't think it went as far as the clerical and administrative, but it did go to the...
I think sheriff's office got, he got some extra raises for all his non-uniformed employees, too. Yeah, yeah.
And there's been poaching within elected officials' offices also, or attempts at it.
From one office to another, or outside?
I poached one.
From one office to another?
Well, that, that's between you folks.
I understand. I'm just saying, it's, it's not just germane to the sheriff's department or...
Well, that's true, but if we have a new elected official, and the new elected official who gets to run his or her office the way they pretty much want to decides to toss out the deputy or the chief deputy, and then grabs a chief deputy from another office, there's nothing these three guys up here can do about that. And that may set a whole series of steps that just echo through the entire county. There's nothing we can do about that.
I understand, and I'm a guilty poacher, so. And some have been good poachers, and some have been bad, so.
Right. I think when we fill this, if you call this a bingo sheet, and you get X's in every, and when somebody yells bingo, then we've got enough numbers and enough values to make some informed decisions. Right now, there's too many blanks.
And I value our employees. I mean, they, they're, I want to keep them all, but we have just a finite amount of money that...
Well, it's easy to say that, Sam, but you keep finding money for everybody else, and you've neglected elected officials' offices for years and years. And our employees see that, and they wonder, where is this, oh, we really value our county employees, except we're not going to give you raises, but we'll give all our department's raises and the sheriff's department's raises, and that's what employees are seeing. And that's what I see as an elected official. I'm looking for some fairness here.
We left the commission office, we, maintenance, you know, they can make more money flipping burgers. So, it's kind of like the equipment operator one and two that Eric, I don't know how you find anybody who would, who would come to work for $33,000 a year. I just, I, you know, that's, that's, so.
Well, that's another issue that I have, is that these other departments under you have advancements. We don't have any. We don't have a clerk one, clerk two, clerk three, which is ridiculous, which should have been started years ago. So, if they've been here for three years, they automatically get a raise. If they've been here five years, they automatically get a raise. Well, they don't get it. All they get is colas every year, cola, 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 cola. Well, Public Works and everybody else, even the sheriff, all of them have advancements in there. We don't have any of that.
Plus the colas.
Yeah. We don't have that advancement.
I wish that Larry's words had more traction with you all, because I can remember when I was a commissioner, and he came up and talked about this very same thing. This thing has been around. Larry has brought this up to the commission over and over again, and to his credit, he has always made the argument that, I don't know if it's different this time, but I know in the past was, that he had a pool of money that he could supplement, you know, the requests, the reasonable requests that he's been making for years, and that other offices, the auditor, the treasurer, others, didn't have any money to bring to the table. But nonetheless, I remember Larry making the argument that all of us, I think that's why we're all here today, need to be treated as well as the other offices have been. And he's made the argument that, I mean, he's not coming here asking just for his employees. I think in the past, you've also included all the other offices that don't have a pot of money, that have employees that do essentially the same thing that your employees do, and make the, you know, the pleading to the commission. I just wish it had more traction. It seems like he's been doing this for years with not a whole lot of result.
Debbie just pointed out to me, I think that the only way we're going to ever totally, well, totally fix it, but I know that Archer salary study was many, many years ago, and some of you thought that was, didn't make any difference, but until we get a salary study, until we get some pay grids, you know, better defined, you know, clerk, you know, clerk one, clerk two, clerk three with pay grids. I know Boone County has that. I don't know about some of the other large counties around here. Maybe that's something we look at Camden, or, yeah, Cape or Camden or some of the other counties you want us to compare to. Do they have salary grids, defined, you know, positions for all these titles, for all these, all their offices and salary schedules?
Well, and if I may interrupt you, Mark, when I reach out to the counties, I don't ask them, what does your chief deputy make? What does your deputy make? I ask what their grid range is first, and many times, they don't have grids either. They don't have those, because it's a fluid thing. The Archer study was a fabulous thing. It's totally irrelevant now because of job descriptions changing and duties.
Looks like 20 years old now.
And that's one thing that the commission keeps asking for, job description, and I think everybody thinks I'm just a total pain, and that I'm just wanting to make work for you all, because I have nothing better to do. That is the furthest thing from the truth, and the job description is very relevant and very necessary, because if you have a four-line job description that says that they are a collector deputy, and they take money, and they make deposits, what is their value to the county with a two-line job description? If they are valuable, and I know they are, I know they're very valuable, tell me what they do. Help me develop the job descriptions so that the commissioners can see what their value is, and we can truly compare apples to apples on job duties and how they may differ from each other, or how they may be similar. I mean, I need you all to help me help you. Bottom line. I am not anybody's enemy. I do my best to work with everybody. I think everybody here will say that I've tried my best to work, but I need more help in order to help you all to make this more feasible for the commissioners to look at it and say, yes, now we know it's reasonable, and this is why. And I'll get off my soapbox.
As a footnote to the Archer study, if you remember this, it was a very decent effort and had a certain level of professionalism that the Archer group brought with us. The problem, when we got done, we didn't have any money to implement it, so...
Or sustain it.
Or sustain it, that's right. But that's different now. We have, we have, we have the money now to do what Larry's and the rest of us are asking for. But as Sheila said, she needs the data to help you sprinkle your pixie dust to move us along, so.
Well, I'd like other comparable counties, too. This is, is kind of hard, you know, to...
So I might have to get running. Eric, you just said we have the money. I'm not so sure about all of that. I mean, if we keep making all these salary adjustments and stuff, at some point, we're going to break the county, so.
Wait, I have to interrupt, I got to interrupt you there, Jeff. We made $2.5 million in interest in the last five or six years off of the excess cash we have to invest. So the idea to say that we don't have the money is simply not true. We do, and the modest, very modest increases that are being talked about today, or might be brought up by other offices later in this year, not only...
We're probably talking quarter million dollars here. That's not just a little bit of money, because you're going to do this for these few people. You've got to do it for everybody across the county. You can't just do it for the one we've been picking and choosing winners. I don't, the whole salary study thing, too, I mean, we had the Archer study done before. Really, nobody accepted it, so it was kind of a waste. We didn't have the money to bring everybody up to it. We did have some grids. One thing that's come out of this good is the career path that Public Works has instituted, and I don't think that's a bad idea to try to do something like that, to, you know, reward some of our employees for their loyalty and longevity, and then to have merit raises. You know, if we're having the cola, then just throw some merit in there, and actually have raises for people that do perform over and above. And I think that's where a lot of this is coming from, and I think that's what Larry's argument was this morning, was he's got somebody that's going over and above, and, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Larry, but I think everyone of y'all in there would be at the table arguing the same thing. So, I don't know. We've got so much stuff that needs to be done at the county. We've got buildings, I mean, we're getting the HVAC done right now. We're just plowing through the money. We got, what, we, 12.5 million, something like that for the youth center? You know, it's going to, it's going to tack into our revenues and interest and whatever money we got.
Couple of comments. We do have money in reserve, but the last couple of years, the extra reserves are getting, are getting very tight. The new money coming in versus regular operating expenses is getting, it's, well, law enforcement fund, it's already that, you know, over, over a few years, they, they're dipping into their reserves. Roden Bridge, I know, is getting real close. Even now, the general fund is getting pretty close now to new revenues, normal operating expenses, almost now equalling new revenue coming in. Yes, we got a lot of money saved up for these, you know, the new Pringer Center or other, addressing other space needs, which are, we do have a lot of, a lot of those needs as well. So, yeah, I mean, yeah, you don't just want to start throwing out big raises without considering how this is going to affect the finances of the county. I totally agree with that, but...
Yeah, I don't want to spend all of our surplus. It's, I think we've got some interesting times ahead of us, and...
Guys, I'm going to have to skate out here. I didn't realize this was on the agenda today, or someone scheduled a 10 o'clock meeting. This is a discussion that needs to be had, and we need to plow through it, so. I don't know if we're voting on anything today or not, but otherwise, if we just want to keep this going, it's good discussion.
Another question. Jeff, you mentioned we got to look at what other entities close by us are doing. Does the city of Jefferson have pay scales for all position, for positions?
Yeah, but they don't have a lot of this similar titles, and so some of it is back to the job description, where I need to be able to compare duties as opposed to titles necessarily.
They did a study two years ago, very complete, very thorough.
Yep.
Very expensive.
It is very expensive.
I'd like to add a ask to your ask if you're calling and comparing with other counties. I would like to compare Cole County to Cole County, because when I look at the continuing education that my employees need to do, and when I look at the chief deputy that I have, she is just under what other chief deputies are making. I'm not complaining. I'm just saying that in this ask, I want to compare Cole County to Cole County. I don't want to be left behind here.
Well, and that's what I've done on this grid that I've started, and has each of you all, what your chief deputy, deputy, lead deputy are making, so that that was my first start.
Okay.
What are you going to take into consideration, your time being here? Because a year ago, so, we got longevity raises, which put some people out.
Right.
So now you're going to tie those salaries back to the people that got the raises for longevity?
I'm not excluding anything. That's, that's the problem. I'm not a decision maker. And that's what, well, and they're on your information, and it's all, it all gets summarized through the commission.
I'm just saying, we need to consider that longevity, because that's what we got raises for. Now, it sounds like you're wanting to wipe it out. If you're going to equal everybody's salaries, then you're going to go back to getting, the longevity's going to be gone again.
We'll need to do a step program, if you include all the years of service, continuing education, and maybe see if...
All of it needs to be looked at. It's all a factor.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
Can you make any conclusion about the deputy salary information that you have? Is there any preliminary conclusion?
Right now, no, I'm not willing to do that, because it's still, it's just too little information.
Okay.
What, what do you want from us, then? More comparables?
I would really like to have four counties.
I think if the clerk would do the sunshine request, maybe that's the way to get it in a hurry.
That's the only way to get it, isn't it?
And just throw the city in there, too, because they've got the same 72 hours to respond to something like that. We can, as I say, we can fill this sheet up with a lot of data, 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 and, and make some assumptions and some modifications, and come across and have some final numbers over there that we say, based upon all the information we've collected, this is, and the limits that we have, this is what's being proposed, and see if it gets two votes up here.
Yeah. I'll just, sunshine request, all the first-class counties, all might be there.
That helps me a lot.
Probably 15. 15, is that?
Yeah.
Somewhere around that. We'll get an average, and then we'll know.
Okay.
Yes, that would help. If you get an average, then salary between everybody.
Charter counties, I don't know. Those are hard to compare to. Like, you might want to admit, St. Louis, Jackson, St. Charles.
And only the ones with... And only the ones with similar budget size. It's all about the budget.
So you want to go by budget or assessed value? I mean, because there's just, there's only a few counties with our assessed value.
Well, I think you'd throw out the charter counties. They're not comparable, and there's only, what, four or five charter counties? But I think the first-class counties, 13, 14.
I mean, Greene is huge, the biggest non-charter. Boone would be the next biggest non-charter. But if you want, I mean, I guess it wouldn't hurt to get their information, so. Or even second-class counties, too.
Well, Pettis, there, Pettis is a close second.
Pettis is second, Callaway's second.
Lincoln.
Newton County is second.
How about Johnson County?
Johnson's second.
Yeah, there's, 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 well, it's a second, it's a fourth, operating is a second. There's four crazy counties up there that used to be.
Actually, Pettis, I think, is still a fourth-class county, too, but they operate as a second.
As a second, right, yeah. I'd say let's put it on, we'll put it on the agenda for next week. I don't know if we'll have data and time to drill into it more, but at least to keep it in front of us.
Yes, absolutely. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Yeah, we may get data back that shows we're a little overpaying some of our employees.
Just you, you're the only one overpaying.
Funny, very funny. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business accounts paperwork, you?
We do not have a council paperwork.
No. Okay. Approval and adoption of update to the traffic safety manual.
So, the current manual that we've had has been in place since 2001, and it was created, actually began prior to that through a grant that was received through MoDOT. And up until that point, I'm not aware of us having a traffic safety manual. So, the manual, what it does, what it provides to us is kind of a document or a policy and procedures for dealing with requests that come in regarding traffic and safety-related items that the Traffic and Safety Advisory Board hears, and then also general operations of our staff when it comes to signing and strapping. And so we've been using this manual. A couple, about a year and a half ago or so, we had a conversation with the Traffic and Safety Advisory Board about possibly updating the manual. We hired Bartlett and West to do a review of it and bring it up to current MUTCD, that's Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices Standards, and that is a national standard that's used throughout the country. When it comes to signing and strapping related items, there needs to be a consistency across all roads that are traveled. So, that was done. Bartlett and West did a great job bringing it up to date, and also added a few other additional things that were kind of fit with some trends and some things we're doing now. So, it is ready for approval and adoption as our traffic safety manual. It would replace the one that's currently there, and I just need a vote to approve and adopt it as our traffic safety manual.
I'd say 20, 2001, I think it's probably time to, to update.
And we did present this to the, the board, Traffic Safety Advisory Board, that Sam sits on two weeks ago, and they recommended to take it to you to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve and adopt the update of the traffic safety manual.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And then, if, be okay to take a public hearing, put it at the very end.
Yeah, one minute. Yeah, so we'll do the approval and signing of change order number one, the Arden subdivision pavement improvement.
So, this change order is the final closeout documents for the Arden subdivision pavement improvements project. It is with TB dosing and excavation. Primary reason for additional cost was an increased amount of pavement curb removal, type A curb and gutter, concrete approach, driveway approaches, and by two minutes space needed to complete the project. Primary reason for less work was lesser amount of drain pipe, clean rock, aggregate base, and full-depth pavement repairs. There was one change to the project, and this was to add subgrade stabilization as the contractor was digging out full-depth repairs. Subgrade was found to be poor material, so we overdug the areas and added compacted rock. Overall, this change will increase the cost of construction by $67,187.76.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign change order number one for the Arden subdivision pavement improvement project.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval and signing of change order number three, railroad spur extension and transload facility.
So this change order is the final closeout documents for the railroad spur extension and transload facility project. It is with Don Schneijer's excavating company. And we had an increase in amount of embankment in place and 18-inch rock-filled base, and lesser amount of work was Class A and C excavation, road control blanket, turf reinforcement mat, and a sliding derail with crowder. There were a total of eight changes to the project that were different from the original plans, and overall, this change order is an increase in construction by $11,937.99.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the change order number three on the railroad spur extension, transload facility, total cost of $11,937.99.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then, with that, we will be wrapping up that project, and I know Eric's been working to try to get a ribbon cutting for that, so.
We are working on the operator agreement. We've been working under an MOU. We will bring an operator agreement with capital logistics within the next few weeks, I hope. And they are getting close to completion of their oil terminal and expect cars, train cars, to arrive in March. It was late February initially, but that date's been pushed a little bit.
Have you saved a golden spike to be pounded in out there?
Forgot all about that.
Gold's too expensive, and I didn't want another change order.
I'd say spray paint gold.
We can spray paint one. And as Matt said, J.C. Rep is looking to do a ribbon cutting on that, probably around the time or when those cars arrive, the train cars, so sometime in March.
Okay.
Instead of one that's warm and there's no snow.
That's when the Indiana bats ought to be coming in, right?
Yeah, getting pretty close, yeah. Thankfully, the trees are gone.
Right, all right.
So we've got that out of Wildwood. We've got to get going on that because of the Indiana bats.
Man, I think you had an early notice to proceed on that project, probably early February, it was kind of.
Right now, it's set up for February 3rd, but pending getting the contract back and everything, we'll, we'll try to hit that date, so.
Okay. So, we've gone through everything. So we will do a public hearing for Traffic and Safety Advisory Board recommendations. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on speed limit reduction on Hem Street Road?
There have been no.
I don't believe so. I'll just go through it real quick. Sam, I know you've seen this, so. We did have two requests come in on, actually, there's a few more requests, but two that we would have to take action on if the county commission is a speed limit reduction on Hem Street Road, and then a stop sign on Silo Hill Lane and Bald Hill. And on Hem Street Road, the request came in, now that the bridge is closed and not to be reopened, less traffic, and it's not a through road anymore, and they asked that we lower the speed. We did a speed study, or a traffic speed study, on the two disconnected sections of the road, and on the east side, the average speed, or the average was 26 miles per hour, 85th percentile is 37 miles per hour. And you kind of use those as different guides to choose your, your actual posted speed. The current posted speed is 45 miles an hour. On the other side, the west side, very similar, maybe a little higher speed, it's a little longer road, especially more traffic that'll go down to the conservation access. So it was 30 mile per hour average with a 38 mile per hour 85th percentile, and it's all signed at 45 miles per hour. Just some shots driving along the road on the east side, it's, this is actually old Route C, so it appears more like a rural-type county road, pretty, pretty open for the most part on this section. When you get on the west side, it's a little more tree-lined, a little narrower, and not near as much traffic, not as many homes on, as you're driving down, but there is the conservation access down at the end, and where this picture was taken is about where that entrance is to that. So, as I said, the current speed limit is 45 miles per hour, is consistent with all the realms of roads around it, which is what we like to do, stay consistent. However, the traffic has decreased since the bridge was closed and split into two sections. 85th percentile, that's kind of the guide that we go by. Now, it's not, it's not the guarantee you have to use that number, but kind of gives you some, some guidance on that. So 85% of the traffic is traveling at these speeds, which is 37 and 38, as I mentioned earlier. Most of this is local traffic, except for people going down to the conservation access, which I don't think is real heavily used as indicated by the traffic count. So there is justification to lower that speed limit based on the data that we found. So, presented to the Traffic and Safety Advisory Board, and they recommended, we recommended, and they agreed, to lower the speed limit to 35 miles per hour. So, we would need a motion to either accept, modify, or deny this recommendation, and then if approved, a court order will need to be signed. And I do have a question, since Jeff is not here, do we wait? Does he just not sign it? I guess, because he's not here, what's the procedure on that?
Usually just put absent.
Absent or something.
And then, as long as you have two, it's fine.
Correct, okay.
As far as the court order would go, I would think the same. It's majority. Yeah.
So, do have a court order there.
Quick question, Eric. On the west side, the conservation territory there maybe makes it easy to turn around and go back.
Yes.
What's on the east side? Is there something down there to?
So.
A cul-de-sac of some kind?
There is kind of. If you look at that arrow where it's pointed to, there's an entrance that's kind of been used as a turnaround for years. I believe it was where the old road used to turn off way back, you know, early 1900s. So there is an entrance there. That's what we're using right now for a turnaround. Not a whole lot of traffic goes down there. So the plan is, as the bridge is demolished, there will also be the plan to obliterate the roadway approaches leading up to it, and build an actual cul-de-sac right here, as well as a turnaround of some sort, either cul-de-sac or just an entrance into there at the conservation ground. So that, that is how we would address that. Currently, you can turn around, it's not a problem. We do have barricades, barriers blocking the roads so people can't drive down there.
But there is no other way to turn around, say, use the bridge, or what? Right. There's nowhere else but the conservation ground to, to turn around.
No, yeah, there's no, from each point on down, there would be no place to turn around. So that's why we, that's why we chose where we did it.
I'll make a motion to implement the speed limit reduction on Hem Street Road at 35 miles an hour.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next is the stop sign at Silo Hill Lane and Bald Hill Road. So this is the hill at Wilbur's Farm subdivision, a newer subdivision at the intersection of Bald Hill and Route M. And as it's been built out, we've seen traffic increase coming out of the only entrance into the subdivision off of Bald Hill. This is a zoomed-in picture of it, and the request is for a stop sign at that location at the intersection it came from. Commissioner Hellsher had a request from a constituent, and also one of our staff asked about it, too. So, two different requests there. Here's a view as you're driving down the road with the entrance to the right into the subdivision, and then coming from the other direction, heading back into town. The entrance is on the left, good sight distance everywhere. And this is as you're sitting on the street, looking at Bald Hill Road, and as you get to about where the stop sign would be, looking left and then looking right. So sight distance is good. There's guidance in the traffic and safety manual that we use for determining when to put up a stop sign. And so generally, you don't really have to have a stop sign at intersections, and if there's really low traffic, just general right-of-way rules apply, which is, has been the case until, as, until the subdivision has started to build out, there just hadn't been that much traffic, and people just looked both ways, come to a rolling stop or yield or whatever. That's generally what you find in really low populated areas with not much traffic. However, as the subdivision is built out, the normal right-of-way rule there does not really apply. It's becoming more hazardous, more cars turning, and getting more accustomed to not having to stop there, and so that fits condition number one. And again, a larger street, more traffic entering the main thoroughway or thoroughfare as, as is Bald Hill Road, and so you have a minor street entering a more major street, and that fits condition number two. Now, there's other intersections in the subdivision that in some cases, we might look at putting a stop sign at, at Silo Hill and Fountain Crest, and then at, I guess it's Fountain Crest around, and then Silo Hill again. With it being a smaller amount of cars going in and out of there, normal right-of-way rule still does apply here, so we chose not to do stop signs at those two additional locations. So the only request right now is at Silo Hill and Bald Hill. So, again, here's where that would be, and then we presented this to the Traffic and Safety Advisory Board, and they agreed and recommended to the county commission that we install the stop sign at this location.
In the absence of the Eastern District Commissioner, because it's his territory, right, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of Traffic and Safety Advisory Board and install the stop sign on Silo Hill Lane at Bald Hill Road.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
So do we have any unfinished business to come forth?
No, I just will reiterate what Harry said. The next meeting is going to be over at the Law Enforcement Center training room, so at least for the next two weeks, maybe three, so.
I'll make a motion that we stand in recess until 4:30 PM.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They're supposed to come tomorrow, or Thursday, yeah.
I think I initially.